We'll call to order the special meeting of the police commission today, November 8th. That's town hall at 5:02 PM. Commissioner Schweitzer is not here, but we still have a form. Let us start with the pledge. I know they moved it. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Material quality, for which it stands. On a nation under our own individual and liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Colby, would you be so kind as to read our correspondence case?
I will. From a resident's mother to Sergeant Asar of SPD. The resident's mother wrote in to thank the department after learning what we have done for her daughter for such a long, soon time. I felt I was fighting this battle on my own, but after speaking with you yesterday and learning what you and the rest of the department have done, lifted a huge weight off of me for the very first time, and I am extremely grateful. End of letters.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, the approval of minutes for the October 13th, 2021 special meeting. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Has everyone had an opportunity to look and make sure there? Okay. In that case, all in favor of approving the minutes for the police commission's special meeting, October 13th, 2021.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on our agenda, old business. Do we have any old business? Okay. Moving on to the next item of our agenda, reports. Chairperson's report. That's me. To Nisha, you didn't have an opportunity, but we had this ceremony for Officer Colby, and that was quite nice. It was at the fire station, fire department, fire building. It's very big and spacious over there, and it was kind of them to lend us some space. My next item is the budget. On 11/16, the chief and I will be meeting with the town manager. And then, the tri board meeting will be on December 1st. I have a conflict, so Commissioner Long will be attending on behalf of the commission. If we want our budget to be included in the packet that goes to the tri board meeting, we have to have it to the town manager by November 23rd, because the packet gets sent to the participants of the tri board meeting on November 27th. Speaking of budget, the end of year transfers that we requested were approved by both the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. So, the two variable sign message boards that also have radar capability will be purchased shortly. And the construction for the lieutenant's office was also approved. Segueing into space, I spoke with Tom Roy, the head of Public Works, and he mentioned that they are working on the lieutenant's office and acquiring, quote, "parts and pieces." And there was talk about January, but hopefully before then getting a meeting there. He also, I think, reached out to the chief, and I was supposed to get an email today, I haven't received it yet, with possible dates for a meeting with Tech Tom, the chief, myself, the police commission, and the town manager to set up a schedule for the future plan for getting the pieces evaluated. And the last thing I have to report is that the MIRA Municipal Employee Relations Act training is still going forward, and if you want to attend, I will forward everyone the link. I received it this afternoon.
It's tomorrow, right?
Yes. Let me double check.
MIRA's not tomorrow.
It's on October.
I think it's Thursday?
No, Thursday's Wednesday. It is tomorrow. No, it's the 10th. It's Wednesday. Today's Monday. Yes, it's the 10th. At 5:30 PM. And that concludes my report. I will turn it over to the chief for his report.
I have a question. Am I ready?
You may. Yes, sir.
When is the meeting between the commission and the town manager taking place?
November 16th at 1:00 PM.
We know about that, or?
And I just, we're just talking about it right now. This is not the same as the meeting that will be before the Board of Selectment, where we present our budget and talk to them ahead of time before they have the other stuff. This is preliminary before that.
Okay, November 11th is the meeting between?
November 16th. November 16th is the meeting with the chief and the town manager and the commission. Yes, me. Just me. Not the entire commission. I mean, you're more than welcome to join us.
Well, I'm just curious, so when the?
That's gonna be at 1:00 PM on the 16th. And then, our next deadline would be November 23rd, if we want to include a proposal for a budget to get included in the packet that gets sent to the tri board meeting.
Do we like this?
We haven't decided yet.
When will that be decided?
We gotta talk about it.
When will that be talked about?
When would you like to talk about it?
No.
Okay, we'll talk about it then.
I mean, that was, you know, part of the MOU, you know?
Yes, part of the MOU is we have to meet with the Board of Selectment prior to the budget so that we can, we have an opportunity to present ours.
Correct.
At this point, I think it's important that we just kind of get like a big picture. So I know the chief and the deputy chief are working on a big picture idea of what we are, what our needs are. So, once we have that, we can then, they can present a budget that we can discuss.
Well, I don't disagree, but you know, in terms of planning and time to be available for it, notice would be important. And it's now two weeks away, November 23rd. Pretty short.
They're good. They're a crack team. They're gonna have it ready for us.
So are we scheduling November 23rd?
Well, I, that's, we gotta see. If we have a budget, then we'll, if we have a rough budget of an idea of what we're looking for, then I would say absolutely we'll want to put something in a package to send it to the tri board so that they have an idea of what we're looking for.
So, maybe what Mike is trying to say, that we will probably schedule a special meeting between you and possibly give you guys a tentative deadline of when we have it done, so that we have a special meeting before you guys have that deadline.
Before the 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, let them, let them. When do you guys think a reasonable amount of time would be to give us a rough idea of the, like, our, our big? I know we're not looking at details on, like, we need X amount of bullets or whatever, but like, the big picture.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could do that by next week.
Okay.
My understanding was that we weren't gonna necessarily present a budget to the tri board. I thought the tri board was when the three get together and discuss some of the,
Yeah, so I-
whatever you wanna call it, ground rules, or what, you know, what they're sort of anticipating and the ideas of what they're looking at. You know, and then, the commission would then be meeting with the Board of Selectment at some point
With our?
to present that. So we don't even have the timeline yet of all the budget stuff, like when anything is due. The only, the first date that we have, the only thing is, is that tri board meeting.
Okay.
On the first, so, there are no other ones.
So then I really need to find out what they mean by, like, documents for in the packet?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, because the purpose of the meeting that's in the MOU is so that the substantive agenda that we want, we should have it presented to the selectmen before they start scheduling or hearing from the Board of Finance, what the Board of Finance thinks about guidelines and stuff. We should know that, I think, if we can. And we should present what we want to the selectmen, so that when they put both the budget together for their submission, they have our whole input. That's all I wanna make sure. It's in there somewhere. I don't wanna skip that step.
Right.
Very critical and important step for us, and I don't want it to just escape.
It's absolutely on the radar, that I, I know I copied the chief, as well as the town manager, saying we needed to have the MOU meeting, for lack of a better term,
Yeah.
with the Board of Selectmen prior to when they do all of their budget stuff. So this was all preliminary, is my understanding, from her, that these are the preliminary steps, and so that's when she gave me these dates.
Okay, I just, I guess I don't understand what's gonna happen with this tri board meeting.
I think it'll be interesting for us all to find out. But if, I'll find out what's in the packet, and if it's just the Board of Finance telling everybody, like, you're only allowed a 3% increase in your budget, or, I don't know. I, I'm not sure what they'll say to us. So, but that's a good point. I will find out exactly what they mean by included in the packet.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. What do you guys have?
Good.
Okay. So I'll find out what is included in the packet and report back. And then you guys will work on giving us a budget and where our needs are.
Yep.
Okay.
And you'll work on getting us a date?
Yes, as soon as I can get a date.
Great, thank you.
There's a question that's swarmed in, and people, so I guess that was part of the. Who gets sworn in?
We can swear. Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Breeze off, Ruth. All right. All right, so I really will turn it over to the chief at this point, for real.
So, just a, a major report. Thank you. For personnel, we still have three members recuperating from, you know, semi-long-term illnesses or injuries, and we have hopes that one will start to return back in December, and the other two can follow shortly thereafter. I'll give you a quick update on motor vehicle thefts. No new thefts since August, since our August meeting, so we are still at nine for the calendar year. What we have seen an increase in is catalytic converter thefts, which is a trend, not just here, but a trend throughout the state. We have had seven catalytic converters stolen from vehicles since the very end of August. The vehicles have generally been those that sit a bit higher off the road, so the SUVs and the pickup trucks, and they've been during that time. So our recommendation is if you see or hear any suspicious activity, please call us right away and respond.
So making sure I understand, people in the middle of the night are going and stealing this part off a car in someone's driveway?
Yep, underneath the car.
Great.
Some upcoming events, we have the annual Jackman and Turkey Trot Food Ride and Collection coming up. That will be on November 17th, from 8:30 AM till noon. And the collection this year will be at Fitzgerald's parking lot. And Chief Davis has a quick update for you on the radio system.
So the new dispatch console is doing this week. Once that comes in, Marcus will be setting up training with dispatch and the officers and employees, I utilize that. Marcus was at the Bushy Hill Tower today putting up the transmitters and receivers. They're scheduled to be at the Firetown Tower later in Louisiana, which is the last tower that needs to be worked on. They're still hoping to have the project completed by the end of December, depending on how long it takes the training personnel on the console. That's all I have.
Okay.
Any updates on dog?
No, no updates on the dog.
Okay, the general report and the consolidated monthly, monthly report for September. Any questions? I noticed there was a jump in not investigated motor vehicle accidents? Is that people just calling, saying someone hit me, and then moving on?
So there was a jump in regular accidents too, especially, if you don't see them here, but compared to the month before.
Gotcha.
There was as well. But yeah, I mean, that's, the non-investigated are the parking lot accidents. The accidents with very little damage to cars, you know, less than a finger vendor.
Less than they just reported, so that the insurance has a catch-up. Okay.
Well, there's substantial increase in the number of verbal warnings. More in here. Excuse me. I mean, year over year, you know, it's huge. And just, any particular, that just people on the road doing things, verbal warnings, you know, pretty much on the road.
So you know that a decrease, right?
I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah. No, I mean, there's, it all depends on what, you know, what the officers observe or what their policy. I don't, I don't know if we can come up with a reasoning why they, there's a decrease in verbal warnings.
I know Commissioner Schweitzer is here. He'd ask, is there anything in here that alarms you that we should know about?
Nothing in here alarms me.
Okay. No trends or anything?
No.
And any other questions about the consolidated monthly report or the preliminary monthly? Okay, then let's move on to the new business. The first item is the 2022 meeting schedule. Anyone get a copy of that? Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, do I have a motion? Do I have a meeting schedule for the second?
Second.
All in favor of approving?
I would just change the September date, make it 10,000 years closer.
I don't know why.
If you don't wanna be there, you're gonna have to be there.
Well, try.
And we're moving that December meeting to the first Monday because of budget. Any other comments?
No, thank you.
All right, all in favor of approving the meeting schedule for the 2022?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on new business is policy review. Everyone has the policies?
Ooh.
Okay. I haven't got there yet. We're here. Do I have a motion on the policies?
What is expected of it?
Well, I'd like to have a motion so that we can discuss them to, to approve motions, or to approve, to adopt the policies.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, I didn't see one in here, a policy for CEW. Is there a specific reason?
Right, yes, we already have one for that.
Okay.
And I actually, if you'd like, I have a little bit here that I could read, that would sort of intro,
Okay.
and may cover that question and some others, and then we would go from there.
Okay.
So in 2020, we did an analysis of our policies and practices related to use of force. The analysis identified that our practices were contemporary, but our policies did not completely reflect that. Some of our practices were not codified in policy, and some could have been more consistent with each other. That is consistent in terminology, the requirement to notify supervisory personnel, and the response of supervisors to the scene. We also did not have a thorough policy that addressed handcuffs or restraints. We only trained to their use. So the Connecticut Police Officers Standard and Training Council released a statewide policy on use of force, which we are presenting as draft General Order 4-1. We are calling it Response to Aggression and Resistance. This statewide policy codifies practices such as the duty to intervene and report in the use of chokeholds, practices we had in place but did not have written in policy. Besides the first paragraph of that General Order 4-1, it is the statewide policy verbatim. Also presented to you are five additional draft policies for consideration that have consistent language in them. The policies are specific to the type of force, such as OC spray, baton, handcuffing, the sidearm, and the rifle, or carmine. They are broken out of one policy based on the use of force type for clarity, specificity, and ease to look these up. One of the draft policies is on the use of handcuffs and restraints, that's new. The command staff drafted these policies based on post of Police Officers Standard and Training Council statewide policy, Connecticut law, and state and national accreditation. The officers have already been trained to the content of these policies because it hasn't changed for us. We've just now written it differently. So these draft policies are presented to you with the intention upon your approval to be effective tomorrow and replace our current Order General 1-2. There are additional draft policies for your, for your consideration in the very near future. We are in the process of reviewing the TASER policy, the CEW policy, which is the state model policy. We added some things to that policy, so unlike the use of force one or the response to aggression or resistance, where we added just the paragraph, we added some other things to the CEW policy as far as requiring an ambulance or medical personnel used and things like that, which enhanced the aspects of the policy. We're also in the process of reviewing our less lethal munitions, which is a B-bag weapon, as well as a procedure for investigations of our own response to aggression and resistance. I hope that answers some of your questions, but those will be forthcoming.
Okay.
They're still currently in effect right now.
Okay. So now, I believe procedurally, we need to have a motion so that we can discuss that.
Well, you can do whatever you like.
Well, for sure. So I would,
You can do that, lady.
I would ask for a motion to implement or adopt these.
Do you care what you did?
No, I, I'm, I know you have a preference, so that's fine.
No, I'd like to move that we approve these.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not able to.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
So for the carbine one, page three, there was,
4.7.
It said, actually, it starts on page two. If unsuccessful, the officer will not be authorized to before he uses a police carbine until they successfully qualify with it. The officer will be afforded a reasonable number of opportunities to qualify. The training sergeant may schedule additional remedial firearms training depending on circumstances surrounding the failure and ability to qualify. So my question was, what is a reasonable number of opportunities for someone to either qualify or not qualify?
So, it will depend on the circumstances. So as, as we age, obviously, things change. And if for some instance, you know, or for some reason, somebody's having some difficulty one year, and they hadn't had it, you know, six months prior, you know, maybe they're saying, things look blurry for them. Continuing to have them try to qualify multiple times, that they may not make any sense until they really have their eyes, they can look at. So it really depends on the circumstances.
I'm sorry. So like, how, what like, the meat, like?
Yes, so I don't, so I don't wanna give a number of, they have five tries. It depends on certain, if they're off, we're gonna troubleshoot why.
Cause like, with the, with the fire, with the sidearm, they have 10 days to be able to rectify the situation.
So, we look at the two somewhat differently, because the sidearm is a requirement statewide. You have to be able to qualify with a sidearm to be a police officer. You do not have to qualify with a rifle to be a state of Connecticut certified police officer.
You might ask for five people.
You have a phone.
Okay. Under due, okay, so the response to aggression resistance. The duty to render, oh, no.
Which is?
I already answered that question myself, so. Page four, under duty report. It says, second period. Any officer who votes to report any on use of force as required by this policy may be subject to disciplinary action in criminal prosecution. Is there a reason why we not, we don't have where they will be subject to disciplinary action for failing to report?
So this, this is verbatim? This is the state policy? Yeah, but this is, this is word, this is word for word, besides that first paragraph. Word for word, the state policy.
But you can make it stricter.
Yeah, you can make it stricter.
Sure.
I'm just thinking that that would, that should be something like a standard that we have as a department for where we are maybe more stricter than what the state is, because they shouldn't be held accountable if they are not reporting when they should be.
So, it, it's gonna depend on the courts as well, so we, so we may be able to go so far with something? You know, and it would be up to the prosecutors and the courts to be able to determine sometimes how accountable people are, and then further beyond that, obviously, the judicial system.
So you're saying will be subject to disciplinary action and may be subject to criminal prosecution?
Yes.
Is that what you're?
Yeah, so not a criminal piece, but you know, specifically that we will give them some kind of disciplinary action for failing to report.
And they may be subject to criminal.
And may be subject to criminal.
Or may not be.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with that. But I think that we should, as a department, have that standard where folks are being held accountable for not doing their job. And whatever happens criminally or inside the court, the court, that's something that they do, but what we do here should be specific to us and how we see things.
When you, when a situation arises, no matter what it is, and you have a counseling session, does that count as disciplinary action?
It does to a degree, yes, yep.
Well, then I follow the Tinesha's point, that even if you have a, a counseling session after the failure to report, that should, seems like it should be a shall.
Yeah. On page 10. So is the, so the third paragraph was talking about maintaining a record of any incident which an officer reports or is over here of an unusual excessive, so on and so forth? Is there a specific? Page 10.
What paragraph?
The third paragraph. Okay. So is there a standard form that the, that the department uses to, to keep track of this information?
I'm sorry, page 10?
Yep, page 10. Oh, I'm not looking at the, no, he didn't, he never goes in there, but page 10.
Subsection 10, letter A.
Last paragraph.
Last paragraph.
Oh, thank you.
Right before page 10.
Any questions? Do we have a particular form for that?
Yep, yes.
We do not, no?
Maybe we need to create one for that? And then, it doesn't say, I know you said verbatim that you're talking this from the state.
Yes.
I think we should also include the race of the officer and whoever, the individual that was involved in it, as well as the age of the person that was involved in it. Not necessarily the officer, but the personnel that was involved in it.
You're hoping, you want to include the officer who was involved, their name, I'm sorry, their age and their race?
So the race of both the officer and the individual that was involved in it, and the age of the person that was involved in it. Not necessarily the officer. I think you should have some kind of standard form there for keeping track of that.
And yeah.
And then, for B, will we also get a copy of this report that you sent to post? Um, and then for B, um, will we also get a copy of this report that you sent to Post?
You could have a copy of it, sure.
And that's it, I don't have anything else.
With regard to this one, I was just, I...
Which is it?
The, the one we're still on, the response to aggression resistance. I just found some of the, the wording and the punctuation to be not up to snuff. But I'm concerned about changing it and opening ourselves up to, this doesn't meet the state standard, this is what Post says we have to do. I don't know what you guys think about that? For example, there's one section where there's numbers and periods and dots and... This is not my original copy, so I don't know what's on. Oh, yeah, here we go, and sub... Page six, subsection D, and then subsection one, then has all this stuff, excuse me, with one parentheses period, armband hold comma, two parentheses period, like this just is formatted very poorly. Um, and I don't like that, but I also don't want to change this so much that it gets off of what we are required to do by the Post post. Just wanna throw that out there. Terry, do you have anything you...
No, I, I noticed the same thing you did as far as some of the wording was, was a little clumsy.
Yeah.
But when I saw the note that this is a verbatim, I didn't, like you, like, I didn't want to change a lot of things. I know Denisha brought out some nice points that I think we, we could incorporate.
I, I frankly have found the language of, uh, statute troubling in some respects. And, uh, the Post application is also troubling to me in some respects, which leads to questions on our own, uh, general orders. But recognizing that we are required to fulfill what is mandated by the statute as the Post regulations, I am hesitant to, um, change or add too much at this, at this point. I need to, I frankly need to become more familiar with it. You know, things like where it says, uh, you know, I don't even know where this is, but notify a supervisor as soon as practical. Well, what does that mean? Does that mean 24 hours? Does that mean a month? Does it mean 90 days? You know, there's, there's, there should be, in my opinion, some more definitive, uh, points that have to be met. But as I say, I'm, I'm hesitant to engage in that right now because I think it's, uh, you know, we, we need to get through this step. Uh, I know that, you know, Post is gonna revise what they have. You know, it's gonna happen, you know, I'd say the next year, the General Assembly will be on that. So I, I, I treat this, you know, more as a living document than something that we have to finalize. I mean, I'm, I'm for approving what's here, um, but with the understanding that we, we, we see the need for, for change in the future, that we can make it. And if, if someone feels that there are things right now that should be changed that are reasonable, we should do it right now. But I'm not prepared to do that right now. I'll vote for it, but, you know, I think Denisha's done a, a good job with the documentation. Those are, you know, those are failures that are, I, I think, of, in the policy. But it's not of our making, it's been handed down to us, but, uh, so as I say, I'm, I'm, I'm treating this as something that's over time, and will be perfected. And so I'm, I, I would, I would, now, I'd like to see those changes made, if they can be made, without jeopardizing our ability to say, by January 1st, we've gotten the general orders in place. I don't think it would, but, I don't know, it's a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this, obviously. And I think there's, uh, terrific, a lot of credit has to be given for, you know, getting it done.
Yeah, well, breaking it down from what we had into all of these individual ones.
Exactly, yeah.
I feel like all of these, though, all of our directives and orders are living documents. That as situations arise, if we're like, whoa, hold up, we need to change this, that's something we can do. And I agree, I do like the, the, what we want to do on our end is a disciplinary action versus what the criminal is, I, I agree with that. I would just want to make sure that we are meeting our standard right now, that we have to for Post, and so that we get all of our ducks in a line and it's not last minute, but, um... So I guess the question is, if we were to change or add that on subsection C to will be subject to disciplinary action and may be subject to criminal prosecution, does that affect? Like, wha- what do you think on, on your end? Is that gonna create undue problems that we are not foreseeing? How do you, what are your thoughts on that?
As far as making a change in, in the actual document, no, that's, that's a real quick. So I, I have no concern that if you move to make those changes, that this, this would stall anything.
And to Terry's, or to Terry, to Commissioner Fogarty's earlier point, disciplinary action can include the counseling after?
It can, it can, I, I think, I think where I'm, um, I guess a little bit thrown off on is there's no time to really process what that may, what that may do for things. So the first thing that came to my mind was, well, what's our process for determining whether it was, you know, unreasonable use of force? You know, so I'm trying to go through all those steps and I, I don't feel comfortable that I've gotten there yet to say that I think that will work. If that's what you want to do, that's not gonna hold this up. That's, so that's not, that's not an issue. I worry a little bit about changing the maze, the wheels, and the shells, and I think that in late terms, that's pretty easy. But I don't know if, if legally that's, that's a, that's really a best move to change the state document. I completely understand why you're saying that, because we would be looking to discipline somebody if they purposely did not report an excessive use of force, there's, I mean, there's, there's no question in my mind. Getting to that, though, getting to determining that excessive amount, are we waiting for, you know, a state court to decide that? Who decides that, and what if it's different? You know, what if, what if the, the state says, no, they're, we're not prosecuting this, they don't feel that there's unreasonable force, but then, you know, we do? So I just have to kind of get through that, and that's why I'm sort of agreeing that it's a living document and let's kind of let that sit in, you know, right now to see maybe what those changes should be. But to your question, will, will it stall things? No.
Why don't we make an agenda item for the next meeting to give the Chief some time to think about the changes that we want to make?
Okay, but in the interim, are you comfortable adopting this as is?
Absolutely. Any, if I may, any other things that, that you were asking about, Chief, sure, really, I don't feel our policy things, we can design and track whatever information that, that, that we think we need. So those, that's not an issue, and obviously sharing any documents is not an issue.
Okay.
Either.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I'm fine.
Any other discussion? In that case, um, all in favor of approving the... That's not the document. Approve, that's not up there. All in favor of approving our updated response to aggression?
Including the general orders.
Procedures, including the general orders 4.1, 4.3.
No, right, right to.
4.4, 4.5, 4.6, and 4.7. Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is presentation.
We do not have a presentation this evening. Anticipating there may be some conversation, we do not have a presentation this evening.
Any other?
A little tap dance would be good.
You start first.
Thank you.
In that case, uh...
Well, I know you said that, well, not, not at 9:00, it's 7:00, but at, at 9:45, I suppose that we're adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.